Good to go.
There are about eight people in the waiting room.
Okay. Hi Irene, hi Walter. Hi Jeff, it's like, it's like magic garden. Hi Hillary, hi Nan, alright, we have everybody in?
Yep.
Alright, well.
Start with roll call. Mayor Foley.
Here.
Trustee Cardo.
Here.
Trustee Fadi.
Here.
Trustee Woods.
Here.
And I get everybody.
Yes, trustee Starbuck is absent.
Okay.
Welcome, everybody, cold, cold spring, although today thirty degrees felt pretty amazing after yesterday. It's our first monthly meeting of the new year, so happy new year. Just to talk about a little bit about the structure of the meeting tonight and our monthly meeting, this is our opportunity to hear from our department heads and our board chairs and also our neighboring municipalities. It's been, it's been a rough couple of weeks in the village with a lot of people unwell. And so I have asked our staff to not feel obligated to sit on a Zoom meeting tonight. We have all of their reports in writing, they're all available to the public on the website. I will pull out highlights from them, but I think they have all deserved a night without having to deal, having to deal with the village. So after that, we'll have a couple of new items, one old item of business, then we'll open the session to public comment if anyone has anything to add. So first part of our new process, is there anyone, this is an opportunity to request a vote to add anything to the agenda? Any requests? Okay. Alright, so we'll move to financial report. We have a couple of things before us, standard end of the year thing of closing out, closing out balances and accounts and moving, moving money from one budget line to another where we have surplus moving to where we need, we need other funds. We have, letters were mailed out for unpaid taxes and those will be due back by the thirty first. And then the other significant calendar item for us is that budget worksheets are going to be sent to departments at the beginning of February. So we'll get that process off. And is there any discussion of the budget line moves that Michelle has proposed?
Didn't have any.
Okay. Hearing none, this is a roll call vote to approve the modifications.
Okay. Why don't you someone to make the motion, please?
Oh, yes, I will make the motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Cardo.
Aye.
Trustee Fadi.
Aye.
Trustee Starbuck is absent, trustee Woods. And trustee Foley.
Yes, thank you Jeff.
I'm sorry, Mayor Foley.
It's alright, I answered both. Five equal votes, my friend, five equal votes. Okay, so we've gotten through the financial transfer, highway department. I want to clarify a couple of things, there have been questions among the public, again, we've had staff shortages in the last week. We now have enough trucks. Oh, sorry, that's, that's, that's roadway, we have, we have the trucks we need, we didn't have the people that we needed to operate them. And we do have Royal on standby for just these situations until we get the larger garbage question resolved, which trustee Cardo is going to address. And so we did call in Royal for this week, it is just for this week, we have a, we have a contract with them where they are on call with us until the end of February so that we don't find ourselves uncovered if we are short staffed or have a vehicular issue. So we have not begun a new contract with Royal, they were covering us for this week, but we're going to have more discussion about that later in the meeting. So and once, once we have the garbage discussion out of the way, we can look at, at larger issues in the highway department. But I want to make sure that tonight we recognize the highway crew, their numbers have been thin and they have really shown team, team spirit and had each other's backs covering each other's work. And working really hard with smaller numbers, so thank you to Bugsy and Cory and Kyle and Bob. Okay, water and wastewater, again, all the data is available on the, on the website for folks who love to get down into numbers and percentages on water and sewer. I just wanted to report that Matt Krug, our director, our, excuse me, department head is helping to draft an RFP for an engineer for the village. Hopefully looking for capacity, a large enough firm that has capacity to deal with water and sewer and other issues, but that is moving forward and we'll have a draft for you to look at as soon as, as soon as possible. That's a little thin right now too, so he'll get it as quickly to us as he can, but I wanted you to know that's moving forward. On the building department, the big bit of news this week is that we asked Charlotte to look inward at our own municipal buildings. And, and she has begun what will be a three week process on Wednesdays of visiting our facilities to determine what the issues are. We have a lot of deferred maintenance in all of our buildings and we need to be prioritized and we need to prioritize health and safety. So Charlotte is doing that, Joe Cardo, trustee Cardo today visited the firehouse and did you actually walk through village hall today, Joe? Or did you spend most of your time at firehouse?
We did the main floor and the basement, we weren't able to get into the second floor where the police were.
Because they were out on the road.
Right.
So, so trust, Charlotte will be helping us prioritize and sort out, we'll have more conversations about that, that I wanted you to know it was underway. In the police department, Larry will be submitting this month's data, he's just back in the office today, so he'll be submitting that later and we'll update the website with his submission. The two new cars are on the road, they were parked in front of the office today. Larry was very excited, he was very jealous that he was not one of the ones, he wasn't the first one to drive the new car, officer Hippel was, and he was, he said, I've been a, I worked for the NYPD for twenty one years and I've never sat behind the steering wheel of a new vehicle. So he was, he was pretty excited. I want to additionally recognize officer Hippel and officer Kelly Close, who've been picking up a lot of shifts to cover. And they've both been, been doing it with a smile on their faces, right down to, to officer Close helping shovel snow in front of village hall. So thank you to our, to our officers. Fire, do we have anyone on from the fire company tonight? I know Erin was trying to make it.
No, there's nobody.
Okay. So highlights of their, of their January report, which covers the month of December, there were eight calls in December, the one of note, and thank you to all of our volunteers, is that our ATV was required for an injured hiker on Anthony Knows, Anthony's nose, which required a good deal of effort on the part of the folks who went up the mountain. We last year added to the fleet at the firehouse an ATV that has the capacity to carry an injured person down. So our vehicle was brought in for that. And going forward, I want to make sure that we're having larger conversations about what happens when a large number of our volunteer firefighters are on the mountain, rescuing someone, doing an excellent job doing it, but we're vulnerable here in the village. We do have mutual aid, I think we need to, we need to spend some more time talking about trail rescues and figuring out how, how the support, how the state can, can step up there a bit more. There were a couple of reminders in the fire company regarding wintertime, one in every seven home fires and one in every home fire deaths involves heating equipment. So please have a qualified professional clean and inspect your chimney events every year and store cooled ashes in a tightly covered metal container and keep it at least ten feet from your home and any nearby buildings. Okay, justice report, justice court report is pretty standard, showing us income by fees and surcharges, et cetera. Our standing boards have had a quiet month, there's no activity to report from the zoning board or the planning board or the, the tree advisory board does have a report, historic district review board did have one meeting. They're actually my, my own property was, one of the properties they looked at, my husband is doing that review with them and I want to thank them for their professionalism. The design is improving greatly based on feedback last week. So I'm no different than anyone else who lives in the district, I have to get approvals too. And it's, it's actually, I find it a very enjoyable process, HTRB is back to Zoom as well as the other boards. The zoning, sorry, planning board will meet tomorrow night. Tree advisory board, I'm almost done with my yammering on here so you can hear other people's voices. Tree advisory board, late submission by the tree advisory board, back at the end of the summer, as part of a climate smart Phillips Town initiative, local not-for-profits and other organizations were brought together to talk about setting six month goals for things that the organizations themselves could do toward reducing the carbon footprint in Phillips Town. One of those was Bosque Bell and Bosque Bell's proposal included return to a more native landscape on portions of their site, but then also looking at how they could reach out into the community. And the way they've chosen to do that is looking at assisting homeowners in expanding trees on their own properties, their collection of trees on their own property. And Bosque Bell has asked in the village for guidance and help from our tree advisory board. I want to be clear that the village, we do not regulate private trees, the tree advisory board does not review anything to do with private trees, obviously unless it's a dangerous tree impacting a neighbor. But we don't get involved in the planting, what Bosque Bell is asking for is access to the brain expertise and the database expertise that our tree advisory board has as a result of our urban forest. What's the word that I want? We, we have, we have a database about what trees we have, where holes are and what, what native species are appropriate in the village. So the tree board is asking, are the trustees, are the trustees good with them leading in with a loan of knowledge on that project? I am comfortable with that.
Yeah.
I think it's great.
Great idea.
Yeah, I do too, I do too.
They should also try to tie in the chamber of commerce at some point, in case there's a funding initiative that needs to come from it or grant writing or that kind of stuff, it could be a nice little partnership.
Good thinking, well, I think we have someone from the chamber on, so you've been thusly informed and you can reach out to Jen Zwark from the tree advisory board for more information. Okay, now we are down to town of Phillips Town and we do have council member Flaherty on with us, hi Bob.
Hey, good evening, everybody, and happy new year to you and your families. My report today, just so you know, we poured the concrete, the new highway building, as it's going up on Fishka Road here, we poured the, the back wall last week. We also approved the purchase of a new front end loader of six hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We also had a meeting, we have weekly meetings with the construction company and right now we were told that our new building is not scheduled to show up until like late April or May. So unfortunately, there's going to be a little stop workage over the next month or so, because just, just doesn't make sense, there's really not a lot of work that people could be doing, especially when it's so cold out this past two weeks. So we're going to have another meeting on Friday and see what we could do to try to expedite the building, but it's not looking too promising for any expedites, I'm told. We had a reorg meeting last, on January seventh at seven, at seven PM, basically everyone that was assigned to their old positions are, got reappointed. I'm still the liaison for the village, which I'm happy about, I enjoy going to your meetings and presenting here. We had Steve Gabba, our town attorney, who referred to review the planning board process, because as you can see in the paper, many times, there's a lot of people questioning what's going on with the planning board in Garrison, in the hill, and I'm sorry, the Shakespeare Festival. So we want to make sure everyone, we're, there's nothing, no one's cutting any corners here whatsoever, we're going through the planning board process and everything's been going the way it's supposed to be going. Although some people have the illusion that we're favoring, favoring the Shakespeare Festival and I just want to make sure that everyone understands that that's not, that's not true. They did request a special use permit, is what they've been operating on over the last several years at Bosque Bell, as it has been. They requested a two-year permit, but we thought it was best to be limited to a year. That's an application in front of supervisor Fantassel and he's the one who makes that final decision. Most likely, he's probably going to sign it, but anyway, just want to let everyone where that, I've been talking about solar panels on our rec center. Finally, we got them turned down, I think it was on December twenty eighth of this year, it's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twelve kilowatts. Now we just need some sun, because the first two weeks it was on, we had a lot of, lot of clouds, so hopefully things are going to change. As I've been reporting on the Garrison Landing Water District over the last several months, as I indicated back in December, we did drill a well nine hundred and sixty feet, but it did not bear a lot of water. So we're right now looking across the street over ninety, right across the street from the, the library, which we, the property that Phillips Town owns. And we, we did find a spot, we believe there's water, so we have our town engineers looking at everything right now. And hopefully in the next few months, we'll make it, we'll be in the process of drilling a well there also. We also added a five thousand gallons additional storage for the, for the Garrison Water District, because every now and then they were running out of water, but since we added that, we have had no issues whatsoever. Also, we have two openings on our ZBA and conservation boards, if anyone's interested, please get in touch with me or call the town hall. Also like to say, that wall, the stone masons are working on on Main Street, looks really good to me, they're doing a nice job, so I want to commend that company who's ever doing the work. That's all.
Jabalco will give them a shout out, that is, it is looking, thank you. I also want to thank the town, first of all, we're glad that you'll be with us for another year. The town has been very helpful to us this week, we had a, we had shipments of rapid tests and KN ninety-five masks and the Hanes masks from the state via the county. We did not have a place, we're, we are open by appointment only in village hall right now, because we don't have contact, a contact list set up here. And so the town has helped us by distributing from town hall, where they do have a separate entryway and folks can access them. The tests went very quickly, the masks are still available, the KN ninety-five masks, if folks need them, can't afford them, can't get access to them while they last, they're there. We're hoping that there will be more test kits available and I will hear from, we'll hear from our Putnam Legislature, legislator Nancy Montgomery, maybe you know more than we know at this point, but thank you town hall for the, for the partnership.
Yeah, we're out of our test kits as well up at the town hall, so also we have plenty of hand sanitizers up there, it must be fifteen gallons that we have, so if anyone needs any of that. You know, I did, I brought a gallon down to my, my church, Our Lady of the Metal today, so they would have some, but we do have like fifteen gallons of hand sanitizers if anyone needs it.
That's good to know.
And again, I, I did forget to mention that we are doing the testing every single day at the rec center for COVID as well.
It is super efficient, if you have not used the, the test center, the test site at the rec center, I highly encourage it, it's open from six AM to six PM. The hours from six AM to nine PM, they asked to please try to keep that to kids who are testing to get back into the classroom, but it's a, it's a very quick process in and out and results come very soon as well.
Yeah, it's pretty smooth, I stopped by a few times, my, myself did to check out the process and every time I've been down there so far, I've seen a pretty good, even easily processed, it goes through, the drive-through, you register, then you go back and get tested. And so far, I went down Saturday morning, there was a little bit of a line, but not really much to consider, if anyone's late. If you look at the news, you'll see people waiting hours and hours for testing, but here in Phillips Town, if you wait a half hour, you're at the most right now, it's probably the most.
I went Thursday, I think there was two cars in front of me, it was quick.
Awesome, thank God we have it, and Bob, and Bob, whatever advocacy, I mean, we are certainly advocating for keeping that center open as long as possible. It's a tremendous resource for us in the village too, so that we can send, we can send staff there who are sniffling or whatever it is as well, so it's very helpful.
Like, the more people go to get tested, the better chance we have keeping it open, right? If we get to a point where there's very few people showing up every day, it's kind of tough to justify that.
Well, let's hope that we're not seeing people there every day, because it's over the ground very, just dying down.
I hope so too, but I'm just saying that's the way things work.
Absolutely.
Bob, this year we seem to be, have a higher number of people than usual coming down to the village to pay their taxes.
Oh.
In the past, it's never been a problem, we just tell them they're in the wrong building, right now it's by appointment, don't leave, so people dropping them in the drop box.
Okay, yeah, it's not good.
You know, we'll collect them, we'll arrange with Kelly or Tara.
Okay.
For us to go there, but if you guys can make it enough, either during one of your meetings, just a reminder that there is a difference.
Yeah, between the village and the town of Phillips Town.
Yeah, we get it for the courts all the time, but taxes, you know, it's a whole separate subject.
Well, I appreciate you collecting them and bringing them up to the town hall every now and then, if you know, for some reason, if you can't get in touch with anybody, let me know, I'll be more than happy to come down and pick them up and bring them up. Okay, unfortunately, I have another meeting to attend, so I'm going to have to drop off.
See you soon.
Thank you, alright.
Well, welcome, legislator Montgomery, what news have you?
I think you covered it all. You Bobby covered everything, but I do have to say, welcome to your first monthly meeting of the year and I just can't tell you how excited I am to be working with all of you. You know, it just seems like we're going to have this cohesive approach to government on every level and we're, you know, making friends and making strides. So I think it's going to be a great few years. You covered the testing that reopens tomorrow, test kits, I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, test kits, I'm not sure when we will get a new batch of those to be delivered to you. I too have KN ninety-fives that I received directly from Sandy Galip's office and I'm trying to get them to folks, you know, who can't get to the town hall. And, you know, mostly businesses, so we can avoid a shutdown, so I did have a couple of businesses contact me saying they wanted some, but, but please, if your business needs them to stay operational, to stay safe, please contact me at the town or, or the village hall. We will get you KN ninety-fives, because as you all know, the CDC is proposing to change their suggestions to actually, you know, have everybody using KN ninety-fives or N ninety-five. So lots of questions from school, parents and, and, you know, people who are uncertain whether they can continue to use their old masks. Of course they can, but the suggested recommendation is for these new, new tests. So we have them and we hope they will get used to keep everybody safe. The legislature doesn't have committee meetings in January, but we did have a reorg, org meeting the beginning of the month and we did elect a new chairman, legislator Sullivan is the new chairman and legislator Yonkies, the vice chairman. We did not make legislative committee appointments, but I did publicly ask once again that I get appointed to the health committee and to the protective services committee. Based on, you know, my experience and my work in the past, I believe that I'm well suited for those and I've been vying to get on those since I've been on the legislature. We all know, right now, those are the most critical issues we face as a community. So I, I do hope they will understand that my background and training with FEMA and as an EMT and, you know, lots of incident command training that I have, that they will finally consider that and appoint me to those committees. Other than that, we did make non-legislative committee appointments and I'm once again happily on the region three DEC fish and wildlife board. So I'm super excited about that, you know, there's lots to be done as far as stream management and protecting headwater streams and as you know, our natural resources in this town is one of our top priorities. What else do I have for you? Nothing to do with the county, but I am so super excited that we have an EMT class starting here in Phillips Town in January. It's going to be held at Howland School through Duchess Community College, Nick Falcone and John Egger, I know worked hard, the Phillips Town Ambulance Corps worked very hard to make that arrangement. It's something that I've been crying for, you know, for as long as I've been on the town board, to get an EMT class on the side of the county. It's not always easy, because it's hard to get people to sign up, it's a huge commitment and we have eleven people.
Oh, right on.
Signed up for this, so I, I just, I can't tell you how excited I am and thankful that, that Phillips Town Ambulance Corps did that. So you know, I think, I think volunteerism and our ambulance corps and fire departments, you know, are, are getting a lot of new volunteers. So I think, I think that's exciting, if we can keep that momentum going, it'll be great. So I'm always here, if you have any questions, I know the test kits are the number one, number one question, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer about that, but if I can get more information, I go directly to the state sometimes, because it's, it's sort of, you know, I don't always get the information I need from the county. So I can inquire again with the state liaisons that I deal with to see if I can get you an answer and when we'll be getting more test kits. But stay safe, stay healthy, I'm sorry that people aren't feeling well.
Thank you very much Nan, could I ask your help with a small thing regarding the mask distribution? I've been trying to get in touch with someone at the food pantry and we keep missing each other, you have a better, you have a better range of contacts within the volunteer pool there. I want to make, I know that, I know that things that both test kits and masks were dropped off Presbyterian Church, I'm sorry, Church of the Open Door, but I'm not clear that the food pantry was counted in that number or not and whether they got the supply that they need.
They should have gotten the supply for both test kits and masks, but I will confirm that for you.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you, thanks everybody, it's really wonderful to be here with you, it's going to be fun.
Thanks Nancy.
Glad to have you, have a good night.
Thanks.
Hey, do we have someone, I think Jeff is with us from the chamber, right? Jeff Michelson?
I am, hey.
Hi.
Happy new year, everybody.
How are you?
Thanks, it's Jeff Michelson on the advocacy chair for the chamber, we'll go over the whole report, you guys have that on file, just do some of the highlights. The Cold Spring a Glow event that we hosted last month was a big success and ended up happening over two days, but in addition to being a cool event with a lot of participation from the community and elsewhere, we raised a little over twenty-two hundred dollars in donations for the Phillips Town Food Pantry through that event. And what else, we did our elections, annual elections this year, all of the existing board members were re-elected and we added three more, Hannah Salit, Jacqueline Azria and Erin Murphy are now on the board. So we have, we have a board of ten members now, which as I'm coming to learn about, this county is bigger than a lot of the other chambers and other towns and villages. So really speaks to how engaged the business community is here and it's a really great group of people. And finally, the next breakfast meeting, which everyone on the call is welcome to join, will be on February fifteenth. This is, we usually, the first one of the, of the year, we host local officials, so especially any local officials are invited to attend. And Nat Prentice will be reaching out to you about that, that's it, thanks.
Thanks so much, good to have the chamber back.
Likewise.
Okay, report of the mayor and trustees, I've been talking a lot, so I would love for someone else to tell us what you're up to. We are, as, as we talked about last month, dividing up responsibilities and, in sort of chunks of, of work, areas of work. So anticipate that going forward, you'll hear from each of the trustees on what it is they're working on at the time and, and what progress they've made. So. Who would like to start, Catherine, you've got good stuff to tell us about parking, right?
Yeah, I, I think so, Eliza and I met and subsequently I met with Jack Goldstein, just to review some of the previous work and just so we were up to speed on where to, where to pick up. And, um, so we, we know their previous work and recommendations and we're looking at developing a timeline for a gradual implementation of some of their recommendations, maybe all of them, but baby steps.
Providing it up into manageable pieces, the implementation.
Well, you, you can't, you cannot roll out the entirety of, of their recommendations. Anyway, I think we have to start with considering the residential parking permit and see if that, we can get that done and then move further along into their recommendations. But we, um, we're working on a timeline to see if we can't get these things rolling. The, that committee did a lot of work and we'd like to pick up the ball and see if we can't move it down the court a little bit.
Excellent. And I also requested of you to that as you're reconstituting that committee, that we include um, a Main Street resident. I think that that, um, constituency is really important to have at the table.
The, um, the other thing is I went down to Mayor's Park today and I saw the park mobile signs on the fence. They were nicely spaced out and, um, Eliza and I, I guess we, we had a little conversation about all the signage on that fence. I mean, I can understand why it needs to be spread out because you know someone's going to park here and then two feet over the sign says something that is exactly the opposite of how they parked. But, um, we thought maybe there ought to be some more, um, uh, better signage, just better signage down there so that, that it's not a fence of signs.
And the Breck Commission is open to helping consolidate all of the, the other signage. Um, so we'll look forward to your recommendations and theirs.
Uh, I have a question in terms of, of any signage into, uh, for the, um, resident parking permit system, we would install those and then anything if we were to go further along, uh, the par- uh, parking on does all of that.
A decision was not made about install. There was discussion both of having the highway department do it and also of, you know, subbing it out to, to have a contractor do that and have it be done. Um, so that question needs to be revisited.
Especially with budget letters going out.
Yeah, right. Okay, anything else?
I think the last board, one of the things before they left is they kind of put together this, something regarding this signage and where signs need to go and the number of signs. There is, there is a document I will find.
I would love to have that.
Yes, I will find that tomorrow.
That is correct. That is correct that that was done, but the, the, a decision was not made on who would actually do the work.
But that'd be a good starting point because I think it details everything.
For sure.
That's it for me.
Tweeps?
Well, um, the last, I've been out, um, sick. Um, one of those breakthrough cases, but, um, the last business that I attended to was a, a visit to the firehouse with trustee Curdo and, um, Jeff Phillips, the chief. Um, to look at some of the issues at the building, um, in terms of, um, new mold or so we thought in certain locations, um, and some damage, water damage that has, um, been kind of an ongoing issue at the building. Um, I think it was a really good conversation. I think it was really good, helpful for us to actually take a tour of the entire building um, and understand, um, what we're looking at in terms of, uh, future maintenance and, and issues with that, with that facility. Um, I think it was also great to have, um, now a working and open relationship with the fire company. Um, I think they appreciated, appreciated us being there and we certainly appreciate the work that they do. So we want to make sure that we do all that we can to, to support their work, which obviously includes a building that is safe and, um, ready for them to use when needed. Um, then after that I was out sick, so I've just been trying to keep up with everything that's been going on. Um, so that's kind of the, that rounds out my, my report.
You're up. Your job is to recover.
Yes, exactly, exactly. And you can deal with every, all the living creatures in your household.
Yeah, yeah. Family COVID vacation, not, not recommended.
Not recommended.
Yeah.
Trustee Curdo, you have been like 24 hours a day rolling. Tell us about garbage.
Okay, uh, before I get to garbage, uh, just to piggyback on what Tweeps had said, we did visit the fire company. Uh, I've been there now four times in the last few weeks, um, with the building inspector today. Uh, we brought a roofing company and a building envelope company. Um, and Jeff Phillips has been there each of the times. And today we were joined by the president, Aaron. And I have to say, they really are genuinely a nice bunch and are very understanding of the fact that the communication hasn't always been great, but they're very optimistic that that tide is changing. Um, and we've been pretty proactive with giving them information. So we're all starting on a baseline. Um, there's definitely some issues immediately that should get addressed there, but we'll do it in a different fashion. Uh, but you know, there's definitely some stuff there. We hit the, uh, village hall today, the basement. Uh, next week we're going to hit, I think, the highway department and the water and sewer building uh, and just start kind of prioritizing, uh, health, safety issues. Um, and things that maybe we can tackle on a short-term basis. And then as we continue with conversations on bigger issues. Um, so that was one thing that I've done. Um, I've spent a lot of time in the last few weeks reviewing documents, budgets and systems. Uh, I seem to talk to Jeff and Michelle on a daily basis and they've both been extremely helpful getting me up to speed on this. So by the time we start budget in February, I probably will have at least a pretty good threshold of where we are and what we're looking at. Um, so that's good. Uh, I spent some time going through our insurance policies, uh, and had reached out to Brown and Brown, our agent, and just requested some information and they had sent some stuff back. We're going to schedule a call in a couple of weeks. Um, cause kind of what I'm realizing is that there's a cause and effect with everything in the village. So if the highway department's short and they don't get to something that potentially could address something else that doesn't happen, which in turn could affect an experience rating, which could affect our premiums, which could affect the budget, which could affect the taxpayer. So you can take this entire circle of the village and everything is intertwined. And because it is so small, all you need is one piece of that puzzle to fall out. And you have a fallout across the whole thing. And that's kind of what we're seeing right now with the whole COVID thing. Um, so I'm just trying to get a grasp on as much as what I can, uh, at least from the financial side, which I know is something that I'm going to be involved with. Uh, garbage, garbage, garbage. Um, we've spent a lot of time kind of taking the garbage topic from the prior administration and making it our own. Uh, Tweeps and I are kind of handling that one. Uh, we've been meeting with Michelle, uh, Jeff. Uh, we're trying to pin down Bugsy for conversations. Uh, and what I did is I kind of put a little timeline together of where we started and where we are today, which I think will just give us a little bit of a background. It'll take a minute, but I think it'll be worthwhile. So basically prior to November 5th of 21, the board was having ongoing talks about potentially outsourcing refuse and recycling. Uh, these conversations I believe have been happening through the years. Um, the numbers never seemed to justify going to the next step, but they then started to become a little more realistic. Uh, the board then decided on November 5th to do a 62-page bid document, which was drafted and released to bidders. Uh, that document's on the village website on the clerks page under garbage bid. Uh, and that 62 pages spells out the entire bid process of parcels. There's 635 parcels. Uh, terms, conditions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, they then received three bids, uh, on November 19th. Uh, the low bidder was Royal Karting out of Hopewell, um, substantially lower than everybody else. Uh, then the board on November 23rd at the meeting, which is on YouTube, uh, actually talked about those bids and some of the pluses of it. Uh, Dave had spoken about the real benefit to this is the expanded time that the highway department will spend. If in fact they're not picking up garbage and recycling. So 40% was a number he threw out that would then allow us to do other things in the village. So that gets back to that cause and effect relationship. If you see sidewalks not getting done, some of it's attributed to the fact that they're spending so much time picking up garbage and refuse. So that then happened. Um, as a result of that meeting, Dave had handed the process off to the new administration. And since then, we've been kind of just becoming familiar with the entire process. Uh, I spent, uh, an hour and a half with Marie early yesterday, uh, and she kind of filled in a bunch of holes in the bid process that we weren't 100% sure of where the methodology came from. Um, and everyone who knows Marie knows there's a method to the madness. Um, and she filled those holes completely to things that I couldn't even fathom how anyone would think of that. Uh, but she did. So that process took place. Uh, we have a call scheduled with Royal Karting next Tuesday, uh, to go through the bid and ask some questions as it relates to, um, process. And then the goal is to get them to come to the board on January 26th and do a public presentation where they'll talk about why they bid, such as what they bid, uh, what it means to the resident, uh, what it means to the taxpayer, what a 95 gallon bin looks like versus a 50 gallon bin. Um, and then at that point, we'll obviously take it from there. Um, we're kind of looking at this as three-tiered. There's the monetary side. We think the numbers are pretty close. Michelle's got it. So it's not 100% of a wash, meaning what we currently spend versus what Royal would cost us, but we're pretty close. There's the non-monetary piece, which is service to the village. I put my garbage out, it gets picked up. I go back in my house. I'm done till the next week. How would this change impact village residents? There will be some changes. It will be something that people would have to get used to. There's a culture of garbage pickup in this community, uh, some of which is unrealistic in the world of municipalities in today's world. Um, but it would be different. But I think once we paint the picture of the third pillar, which is the highway department and what they can now get done realistically, I think everything will start to come together and it'll make a lot of sense. And whether we proceed with not, obviously will depend on a lot of different factors. So that's kind of a history lesson in the world of garbage, leading up to today. Um, this board hasn't really talked about this as a group. So what I mentioned to Kathleen is if maybe we could just informally have a conversation of what people are thinking, um, what they're comfortable with. And is this something that we should continue to proceed with? Cause it's going to probably start getting down and dirty, if you want to call it that, uh, in the next two to three weeks of information and detail. So I thought it would be a good idea if we just had a conversation informally and say, listen, is this something that we really think we should pursue? And why? What questions, concerns might we have that we can jot down before the 26th? And lastly, if somebody felt strongly that no, 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 and there's enough of the no, no, no's, then let's not go through this exercise and waste everybody's time. So that's kind of your garbage 101. If you want to call it that, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Joe. Tweeps, Catherine?
I have a question. Um, how, if we didn't in, uh, take on the, uh, royal scenario, how large would our highway department have to be to really do the work the village needs done? And what is that kind of cost? Because really we're operating at half speed, right? We have three and one when we used to have six and two. Full-time, summer help, part-time. So you know, if in a perfect world, if all the things that the highway department is going to be able to do, if we have Royal, right? If in fact we didn't have Royal, how big does the highway department need to be? And are we saving money by using Royal or would we save money by hiring more people in the highway department? I, I, it's just, I, I really, I don't have any visceral reactions to whether we do it or they do it. I, for me, it's just about, um, the cost, really. And, and you know, I mean, the highway department is kind of near and dear on a strange level in the village. So you know, we don't want to, you know, we're, we like those guys. They live here, most of them and, and historically have. So you know, do we, do we want to hire more of them or is it better to, um, have the efficiency that we would have if Royals picking up the garbage?
I mean, that's a legitimate question that I couldn't answer. What is the ideal size of a highway department? Um, what I do know is that our highway garbage truck is almost on its last leg. And whatever we do decide, probably in the next few months, that decision has to be made because that truck's not going to make it into the summer.
Yes.
Uh, the number that's been thrown out for a new truck, uh, all-inclusives about 215,000. Um, but that's something that would need an immediacy if we decided to stick with our own crew. Um, and you know, that's, that's a legitimate question, you know, is it a money saving? Uh, what do we need more of what? Uh, I could probably say the cost of personnel increasing on an annual basis is going to be significantly higher than the cost of outsourcing to a Royal company. So the growth in that budget, if we
Would be double, really.
It, it's going to be substantially different just based on wages and benefits and everything else that it costs to keep employees versus what Royal has built in their escalation, which is like 3%. But I can't answer the, what's the master plan of that? You know, we're hoping to get some insight from the highway department themselves. Um, it's been a little bit of a challenge. Um, and Kathleen, you've been dealing with this, I know for a little bit, so we might be able to fill in a few holes on that. But yeah, it's a legitimate question.
It is a legitimate question. And I think, you know, realistically, the, the definitive answer is more than three if we want to take on other work in the village and do garbage. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's effectively two and a half days a week. Monday mornings, sweeping Main Street and dockside and dumpsters. Tuesday for residential garbage and Fridays then recycling. And that's what that leaves, that leaves Wednesday and Thursday for real sidewalk task deployment. And, and this is why we are, we have, we are very, I mean, is one of the reasons that we are behind is to, too few hours and too few skilled bodies to do the work. And I think we just have to be really clear about that. We've, we're, we're asking a lot of a small number of people in the current configuration.
Keep in mind that to get a new garbage truck, we're probably looking at a minimum of nine months, if not longer. We ordered a dump, we ordered a dump truck in June. Um, we hope to have it at the end of February with the supply chain issues that are going on. There's a backlog, um, like getting a truck sooner than that, I don't think would be realistic.
Thank you for, for that reminder, Jeff. There was, there was pursuit of a new truck previously and it fell, fell to the COVID monster too. Yeah. So, yeah, all of these, it, Joe is right. You have, all of these pieces have to be part of consideration. It's, you can, it's impossible to look at any of them in isolation. And I'm, I'm sure that, um, you know, there is the feeling that we've been talking about this for a really long time. Why are we still talking about it? The answer is it's really complex. Um, and we want to make sure we're making a sound decision in every area, um, as we make the big decisions.
And just one more comment from, from me. One thing that I think that I'm starting to see in my five-week career on the village board of what needs to be a priority is the repairs, maintenance and some of these physical plant capital issues that the village has. That we, we have to start tackling some of that in some capacity. And if we just kick the can and we keep kicking the can because we found something else that we can't agree on, we're really then doing a disservice to the village because in reading the insurance policy, we've got $15 million of assets that they record. You can't just let that stuff deteriorate. And what's happening is we're starting to see it. Uh, when you get behind the scenes, you see more of it. Uh, but it doesn't take a genius to just walk down Main Street and look around, stick your head up and say, whoa, the village owns that building? What about this? The village owns that? What about this? And the firehouse was something very eye-opening of what is a big issue. And that doesn't mean that we're going to go crazy. It just means that we have to kind of take it in bits and pieces and do it intelligently, but we got to deal with But we got to deal with the basic stuff first because that's the stuff that really is going to cause a problem.
Oh, we are, we are both landlords to the firehouse and we are also employers who need to provide a safe workplace. It's our responsibility to do so. And so that's part of the process of working with Charlotte to identify and prioritize those health and safety issues, issues that we have a starting point that, that is, that makes sense. We're starting in the right place. Thank you so much, Joe.
Well, I work. Thank you, Joe.
My pleasure. And thank Tweps, too. She's on the team.
Thank you.
I know you're healthy. Don't think you're getting away with anything.
I, I, I do think it's worth continuing your pursuit, Joe. Garbage is, is an albatross, is an albatross right now. And it really concerns me, the, the concept of not being able to get a truck. And at the end of the day, garbage isn't just about keeping the streets neat. It's a public health issue, and we have to have, we have to have our garbage picked up efficiently. And there, yes, we just have to know that it's going to, it's going to be taken care of every week. That's where we are, where we are right now with Royal. And I, I should say, while we're on this discussion in the, in the morning, we're going to confirm in the morning what our staffing levels are for recycling and make a call for recycling. You may see Royal picking up recycling on Friday, giving everybody a heads up. We'll confirm via email blast and social media. But we'll make that call in the morning. Was there anything else that you wanted to add, Joe? Or did we cover what you wanted to cover?
I think that's it for now.
Okay, I will, Eliza submitted a written report and her work. Again, we're all, we're all getting started in the new year again, but her work right now is focusing both with trustee Fatty and the Rec Commission on signage, but also she's turning to look at the short-term rental code. The law is in effect. We have had very few applications for permits. And there's, there are reasons for that. So we want to take a look at the, we want to take a look and, and see what we can do in the law to get to higher degrees of compliance. So she will be putting together recommendations for us and reconvening or convening for the first time. Community members to be part of that conversation. A couple of quick things for me. I feel like I've been talking all night. I want to thank former trustee Early for the work that she did with Joe this week to help. It's immensely useful to get the, that information from her. So thank her very much. We've talked about the COVID issues we made. I wanted to update you that the 40 main parking agreement is going forward. Our, our attorney has delivered a draft, which I will review and then share with you for comment before we approach the property owner, but that is going forward. Tomorrow, I am on a Zoom call with Parks and the Fuhrer Trail to get an update on the Dockside project and the, and the larger Fuhrer Trail project. I know they have been met with the town. I believe that legislature Montgomery and Assembly member Gayliff will be with us tomorrow as well, and I'll be asking the Parks to make a public presentation as well. The public needs to have, have access to that conversation as well. I will say that Parks has been very responsive after a bumpy start at Dockside with the work for the Shoreline Stabilization. They have been very responsive to requests from the village, you know, regarding marking pipes, regarding making safe pedestrian ways. If anyone has any concerns, please let us know. But I, I feel that they got on those issues very quickly, once we pointed out problem areas down there. The project works forward. I'm glad I am not working all day long on the river, on the river with these winds. And last, I did meet today with Ed Curley, who's a Lower Main Street resident. He had expressed interest in the, what has been called the Community Advisory Group, coming out of the, the last year's initiative on police reinvention. I've asked Ed to chair that group and to convene that group. We're going to meet next week to talk a bit more about their, their remit and their work plan. And I'll have more to report to you on that. Okay, that's everything from me. And from Eliza, her report. Speaking of highway department, we have an employee that I would like to recognize. Corey Thomas has been with us for four years now. After Bugsy, he has the longest tenure in the department and the most institutional knowledge after Bugsy. And Corey has really, really stepped up the last couple of months, both with Bugsy being out after an injury and the varying, the varying configurations of people in the, in, on the job site every day. I may have my alarm going off again. I thought that I shut it off. At any rate, Corey has, has done excellent work and he has really stepped up in terms of leadership and in workload. And I would like to recognize that by proposing to the board a dollar 35 an hour increase for Corey to bring him up to, to $20 an hour. Corey has also expressed interest in pursuing a, a CDL license, which would be a great benefit to the department, and I would like to support him in that effort. Any discussion on that proposal?
I think it's great. He really did step up to the plate when we needed him. And given our, the short staff and small staff, we need people to, to do exactly that. And he did it. So he deserves the recognition.
Thank you.
I agree.
Yeah, definitely.
So Jeff, do we need a formal vote on this?
Yes, yes.
So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to increase Corey Thomas's salary to $20 an hour.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you so much, Corey. Okay, Jeff Amato with us, shifting to Rec.
Yes, he is.
Hi, hi, everyone.
Hi. So if you would give us, we've dropped your monthly report down a bit so you wouldn't have to be going on and off screen all evening. So if you want to give us a summary from your monthly report and get the feedback you're looking for on the 9/11 memorial, and then we can dig into your event applications and the event coordinator job description.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so each of you should have received the, the report. So I'll just give you some brief highlights. Trustee Fatty had already mentioned about the signage down at Mayor's Park, and that's on our agenda. We're going to, what we'll do is we'll take photos of all the signage, the existing signage, and then we're going to propose a consolidated, more welcoming, hopefully more clear signage, at, at least at the, at the entrances for where we can reduce some of the signage. Obviously, we might need to leave signage up, the diagonal parking signage or the, the meter signage that would stay. But, but the other signage can definitely be consolidated and, and clarified. We are also pursuing grants. We started to, to look into grants to, to help aid in, in rehabbing the, the parks. In particular, Mayor's Park, we're looking to repave and seal the, the basketball court as well as the, the ball fields, the softball field, and, and also the baseball field for that matter. So, and we're also looking into other ideas. If we can, if we can get grants, if we can secure some grants to, to some of the other parks as well, what we can do to them to to increase usage for the, for the residents. And Michelle, actually, the village accountant had, had reached out to, to me today, offering her assistance with that as well. So we're going to coordinate with her.
Awesome.
You had mentioned the, the 9/11 memorial sign. We do have a rough draft of that. And that's a, it's an Eagle Scout project. Owen Comercino is a Boy Scout and is looking to do that, to help us with that for on Morris Avenue. So I did send that. I can hold it up here. This is the proposed. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
You should have received this as well. So that's kind of the, the rough draft, something that we were thinking. We wanted to keep it simple, but identify the Patriot Garden and Coats from New York. So that's just something that, that we came up with. The intention is for it to be, to withstand weather and time. So probably some type of either aluminum or stainless steel. And then the, the writing, everything, the signage would be cut out. And, and then hopefully visible from both the north and southbound and with some kind of a, maybe a black background in between. So it would be kind of a primarily a lighter color, like an aluminum, but the contrast would, would make the sign kind of pretty visible. It would be fairly large, probably, you know, at least three, three feet or so, three by three or thereabouts. And with some substantial supports, six by six pressure-treated posts, wood posts. That's kind of the, the, the draft that we're going with. So I don't know, are there any comments or questions about that?
I have a couple. It would be good to see, to, to mark out on a site plan. I mean, it could literally just be a very basic, an X, exactly where, where we're talking about and a, and a materials list. I would say that signage within Top Park has been reviewed by the HTRB. That's a good stop for, for Ben to make for advisory. It is Ben, right? Or that's his dad, Ben is his dad. Owen is the son, sorry. To get an advisory view or their advisory opinion on the sign, as they did with Top Park.
Sure, yeah. I think right now we're, we're looking at somewhere at the, at the beginning of the walkway that leads to the, the Patriot Garden. So not directly on the road, set back slightly, a few feet. But, but that's, yeah, I can definitely mark up a, a map indicating the, the proposed location. And it can be subject to change, too.
And the, so the rock, the rock that's there now will stay, does stay. This is in addition to that, to help people who are entering the park know what this area of the park is intended for.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Yeah, I think that, yeah, the, the steel, the stone, the stone, you know, everything within the, the park itself, the, the garden, the Patriot Garden area would, would remain. This is really just letting both residents, some residents don't even know that, that there is a 9/11 memorial. And as well as passersbyers that, that, you know, that would be traveling on 9D. So it's, it's really just to let, let people know that it's there. We're going to continue to revamp the, the gardens itself. We're working with a garden club and working on improving that as well. And hopefully, I think we're going to try and actually coordinate with either the, potentially having Memorial Day Parade pass through there. If, if they're willing to, to change their route and possibly stopping by there. We discussed that internally, maybe proposing that as an option, so.
That's a great idea. Do others have feedback on the sign?
I like the parade idea.
I do, too, a lot, actually. This is such a great Eagle Scout project. At some point, I, I assume Owen needs to come in and talk to us himself, yeah?
Yeah, this is just preliminary. I wanted to just kind of get the, the ball rolling. I've been having it on the agenda. We've been coordinating for a few months now, Owen and I, Owen and I. And I just wanted to kind of just let, give an update of, of where we are, what we're looking at. Owen's already started looking at materials and, and ways of cutting the materials, too. Thicknesses of materials. So I've been coordinating, coordinating with some people that I know that are, they're good with, good with metal, that work with, actually for the town. And, and just trying to coordinate on identifying the right materials to use, the right thickness, to, to make something that's going to last and, and that we can be proud of.
That's fantastic. So I would say link into, to Sean Conway on HTRV as Owen creates his materials list.
Just a reminder, 9D is a state road. So any signage on 9D, we'd probably need to have to go to the state for approval.
But you're talking about within the park, right, Jeff?
Within the, well, within the park is fine, yeah.
Other Jeff.
Too many Jeffs.
Jeff A.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess it's probably a good question, Jeff, to, to find out how far the setback has to be. So that, you know, we don't have to have this, this signage approved because it's not going to look like a, a road sign. It's really meant to be set back a little bit, but not too far that it, the, there's hedges, bushes there that, that would block it. So I think, yeah, maybe we can find out how far the setback is. That'd be great.
Will do.
Once again, Jeff, Jeff pulls super important, small things that the rest of us don't necessarily think about. Thank you for that. Okay, do you have what you need then on that? Can we talk about your events coordinator?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so there's, there's been two documents sent out. The first one is the event coordinator position. It's a job description. It's a position that we're looking to, to include, to, to assist the, the Rec Commission as well as the village in coordinating these, these events that, that we have for both the community members, the village residents, Phillips Town residents and beyond, actually. So, so, yeah, so we did get some great feedback from trustee Curdo, trustee Starbuck. And, and we're, we're in agreement with everything that, that was said for both the event coordinator and for the ticketing and non-ticketing event. Do you want to go through each one?
Jeff, Jeff Vidakovic, I'd like, it might be easier to frame the conversation if I share my screen. I took what the comments that people had made and put them into a single document. So we were looking at emails going back and forth.
Okay, you should be able to share.
Yep, it's coming. Okay, so are we seeing Recreation Commission updated applications?
Yes.
Bring it over here onto the screen. Um, just small details for the, oops, I've got the wrong one in front of me. Hang on, there we go. Just deep, just small bits of details. I think that the, working with the highway department and the police department may require some coordination with the clerk, so I would add that. I, I, the item about, I understand exactly what you're getting at with a person being able to assert themselves, but I would modify it so that it's affirmative and under, under requirements, ability to consistently and confidently apply and enforce rules with all applicants and event leads. Does that get us to a sort of a less punitive sounding spot? Joe suggested smartly, I think, that an event summary be turned, be, be turned in after each event so that we can learn from lessons of each event. And maybe the, the Rec Commission could help set up a standard, a standard form for the person to work from.
Sure, absolutely.
Awesome. And that should come while it's fresh in their minds. So within, I would say, within 24 hours of an event, does that seem reasonable?
I think so.
Okay, and the reporting line, because the clerk is consistently, Jeff doesn't really need another thing on his plate, but you are the one who's consistently in the office and engaged with all departments and have finger on the pulse. I think it makes sense for that person to have you as their primary. All departments and have finger on the pulse. I think it makes sense for that person to have you as their primary contact. Um. Any other feedback on the coordinator?
Yeah, I thought it was pretty well put together, to be honest.
I do too. Um, so if you can make those modifications, let's get that rolling if, before we get into springtime.
Was the um, the suggested price, were you in agreement with that?
Of, of the, of the amount the person is paid? Well, I think that kind of depends on our next discussion. Related to ticketing, pricing for ticketed and non-ticketed events fees. Um, I think we all, I, I'm not sure where Catherine is on this, but at least uh, Tweeps and Eliza and. Joe gave feedback that we think that maybe the, the prices are a bit too low, particularly with for, for profit events. You know, the parks, the parks an asset and we have to pay to maintain it. Um. And the. You're in agreement?
I'm in agreement with that line of thinking. I, I, I was trying to figure out if, if, say, an event is. I mean, start to finish, it's going to be about a 10-hour event uh, for this person on a weekend, right? 10 hours a day, possibly, so that's puts you at 250 a day, that's $500 for each day. I mean, it depends. If it's a one-day event, it's 250, but it's uh, like uh, something else, it's two, then it's 250. We're just trying to make sure that we cover the cost of the person that gets the coordinator job. So between, you know, writing reports for debriefings and working with the person. From, right, you know, initial meeting. To debrief, um, we just have to make sure that we cover, it's, it's like the building department, as long as. You know, the fees cover the person's salary, we.
I agree with you, Catherine, and I think that, that Eliza's comment that. You know, there are going to be costs associated with having this person available, whether it's a for-profit sponsor or a not-for-profit sponsor.
We still have to pay them.
Right, we still have to pay them. So if, I think that there has to be a fee. On the not-for-profit side. Joe, you had feedback about the amount that was valuable?
I mean, I just thought for the for-profit mayor's park. I'd be more aggressive. I mean, the person that's running that event is doing the P and L in their head or on a piece of paper. And they're factoring in the cost of doing business all the way down to how many bags of ice I'm going to have to buy. I think they should, I think they should pay 3,000, not two. That's just my personal opinion. We have something that I think has value and we shouldn't discount it for someone who's making a profit on it. Uh, I think it's a little different if it's the Girl Scouts who are doing a cross-over-the-bridge event. But this is someone who's actually making a profit on that space and their intent is to make a profit. Um, I don't think we should discount what we have, because what we have is something that.
They want.
They want.
Yeah, I agree. Um, and, and I did clarify, just so you know, the um, the current numbers, the current fees. Are, are a thousand dollars for the field and $250 for the pavilion, so we, we did increase them. Uh, 100%, and um. Another point, and I'm, and we're okay with going to 3,000 as well, um, for the for-profit, that, that makes sense. Um, in terms of the event coordinator's fee. Uh, our intention was that this fee be passed on to the applicant. And the uh, the last line item on the, on the fee structure table. Uh, it, it reads that the Village of Cold Spring may impose additional requirements prior to the issuance of the permit. As required by the nature of the use of the event, any costs associated with this additional requirements will be incurred. By the permitee, so maybe we can clarify that more. To uh, to indicate, at the time we put this together, we didn't have the event coordinator position, but that was kind of our intention with that. Was that this would be passed on through, the same with um, with the uh, 501(c)(3) organization. The um, that fee would also be passed uh, through to them, so that they're covering that. Um, and that the village is not um, not having to pay for uh. For, for that out of, out of their own budget.
I mean, I think if that's the intent, I think then that language should be more specific that they're actually. So when the person reads this, they know exactly what they got to pay.
Yes.
That we're going to pay 2,000, and we're also going to pay the fee of the person who's the attendant on the day, and it's going to be approximately X, Y, and Z. So it's, it's crystal clear.
Yeah, we can do an hourly rate. I mean, we, we, we provide an hourly rate for the police. Um, for, uh, for the officer, uh, the hours will be determined by the officer in charge. We do provide that as well. Um, if the, if the police deem that there needs to be a presence at the event.
Okay, so if you're going to do that, then I would say that, you know, use the hourly rate. Uh, have Michelle figure out what it costs for taxes and fringe, and then add maybe a 10% admin to it. Which is the pain and suffering of processing everything, and there's your fee for the hour. If you're going to go that route, or you just build it into the cost and then, you know, it becomes less of a conversation.
I'm sorry, when do they actually pay all of this?
Uh, it's beforehand, before the event.
So how do you?
No, no, we're on the same page. How, how are you going to know how many hours? Like, you can't ask them. For the event coordinators pay before they actually. Have the event, because you don't know how many hours.
Correct, yeah, so there are security deposits as well, so the numbers could be deducted from the security deposit if, um, if they exceed whatever estimate is provided. Um, it's hard to, it's really hard to identify, um, even if it is a, a 10-hour event. Um, there's hours beforehand and after, afterwards as well, um, coordination and then.
Yeah.
The debriefing reports, um, you know, there's also setup, they have to be there for the setup and breakdown, if there's tents. Um, any type of deliveries, that sort of thing, so, um, so it's really hard to identify a specific number of hours, that's why I didn't want to. Um, that's why we didn't want to um, put it at a set number per event. Um, or per, per event day, because th- these events vary, some of them are just one-day events, um, others are all weekend. So, um, I think at, at best, we could provide the hourly rate. And then um, a uh, an estimate of, of hours, um, in addition to the hours of the event.
For. Oh, I'm sorry.
For police fees, we typically bill them after the fact. Once we know how many hours the police and the number of officers. That have worked, so we, we will bill them after the event. We've never had an issue. Collecting, people sign up upfront, they sign the agreement that lease will be billed at. Such, such, you know, whatever the rate is, $38 an hour. It's also with the film, you know, people who film in the village and have to use police, it's the same thing, we bill them for the police afterwards. Once we know the actual hours worked.
Oh, thank you, Jeff, that helps.
Um, also, just in terms of the security deposit, um. That number two seems very low, espe- especially if you're thinking that that would kind of initially cover. Um, you know, the expense of having an onsite person, so I would suggest that those be. Significantly raised as well.
I agree, I was just about to s- to raise that point myself. If you're going to charge them $2 and $3,000 for the field, a $500 security deposit isn't enough.
I think, yeah.
Do you think it should be equal to, what we've done on the other event, was that the security deposit is equal to uh, the event. Fees for the day.
Um, yeah, I think it should be, because if you think about it, like, in terms of if you're renting an apartment or something, you know, the. You pay a security deposit and the security deposit is a one-month rent, right? So this would be sort of like the same. Same application of that.
Yeah, that, that's really, it's not meant to cover this, this fee, uh, uh, I think um. Jeff brought up a good point, that that should be built separately, um, but this is meant to cover any damages potentially to the field. Um, or, or the facilities, um, and so, yeah, I think, I agree that. That if it is some, if there are some significant damage, it could definitely exceed the, the $100 a day.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, to go back though, if, if we are passing that um, event coordinator positions fee. Onto the app, applicant, um, do we still want to increase the for-profit? Um, use of the, of Mayor's Park from 2,000 to 3,000?
I mean, I, I think so, it's, it's waterfront, it's waterfront property in the village, they're turning, they would be turning a profit. On a village asset, we have to maintain the park and, and. You know, income like that can help us do better things in the park for the residents as well. Um. So, a- and, and when, when we think about the numbers that are being charged, yes, the numbers that are charged at Baskabel are higher. And more services are got from Baskabel, but, but we also are not without facilities at that site. That, right, we have bathrooms that we, that, that folks can use for events and, and need to be maintained and. And that view, that's what, that's what people are looking at that space for, it's.
Yeah, I was trying to just check Doc Side's application, uh, but I think that's somewhat consistent with um. With the fee structure for uh, for Doc Side. Um. Yeah, I think it, well. It's a little bit.
I think at the end of the day, it comes down to. Do we want to have these kinds of events on that type of property and what does the village derive a benefit from that? It's not going to be necessarily a monetary huge thing that's going to change anybody's life. But I think if we're going to have it, we got to at least get a couple of bucks for it. And then the conversation of whether or not any of this stuff is worth it in the long run, I think is a different conversation, but that's something that probably. Needs to happen over some time. So I personally would raise the fee, add on the. Uh, the event coordinator, which will help the event run better, smoother, which they in turn will probably be able to execute. Their mission better, and, you know, I don't think we're going to lose business. You know, the person that moans and groans over a couple of bucks for an event like that probably shouldn't be having the event in the first place.
There you go.
That's how I would look at it. But that's my business hat.
And we, and we don't want to make it so reasonable that it's in use every weekend and we destroy the asset.
Yeah, that's a good point, and it's not going to be able to be used by, by residents too. So, that's a good point, very good points.
Prices, price needs to be a barrier sometimes.
Correct.
That's, that's an excellent point, Catherine. Is there any other feedback that you need from us?
No, I think uh. I think that's it, the, um, and so now regarding the 501(c)(3). Um, the question was there, was just covering the costs of the event coordinator, so are we okay with those fees? Leaving them the way they are, and just clarifying that the event coordinator. Um, these would be passed on to the 501(c)(3) as well.
Eliza's suggestion was that you have some fee.
Yeah, well, there is a $500 fee for the 501(c)(3)'s for Mayor's Park. Um, for a ticketed event. I don't know. If there could be a ticketed event at the pavilion only, there isn't a fee there, but we could put that at. Um, y- you know, the, at a, you know, $250 number, um. I don't really know, we've, I don't think we've ever had a 501(c)(3). Hold an event there.
Well, you've got Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts.
A, a, a ticketed event.
A ticket, oh, ticketed, no, I'm not aware of any either.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean one wouldn't be proposed.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that at, at minimum, at minimum, covering the, covering the cost.
Yeah.
And a small fee.
Yeah, okay, so we can put that to 500 and 250 for the pavilion. Um, and if there are ever any 501(c)(3)'s, they have to be located within um. Within Phillips Town, too, they have to have a uh, uh, so we can't have a 501(c)(3) from, that doesn't have a presence. Um, within Phillips Town, so we did clarify that in the um, in the application as well.
And I think requesting. Documentation of the 501(c)(3) status is reasonable too.
Yeah, we, we had that on there previously, we weren't sure what was acceptable and what wasn't for. The status, if it's a, you know, tax filings or, or, or what, but we can, we can put that back there.
There should, there's a, there's a standard form.
Yeah, I know.
That they're given to present.
And they can pull it right off the internet too, the not-for-profit if they wanted to.
Yeah.
Through the state.
Yeah, most of them are on file, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, um, we have on file already.
Okay.
When they apply, we pretty much know. When these people come in, you know, who they are, especially if they're local, whether it's a not-for-profit or not.
Okay.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you for your help with this.
Thank you. You all meet next week if you, um, if you need, need. Your trustee work area representative there, get in touch with Eliza. That would be helpful and save you time. Or, or Catherine, Catherine is on that team as well. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay. Um, moving to old business, so last week, we took up the question of. The vaccination policy for staff. I will say that it has been a. As for everyone, dealing with COVID has been a rapidly evolving um, situation all week long. Um, and we are, the reality is that. Um, we have had. People go down on our staff who are vaccinated and unvaccinated, um, so it strikes me. Much as I, I very much encourage everyone to be vaccinated, um, and I recognize that. The likelihood that someone will be off the job and back on the job quicker if they are vaccinated is a real thing that we need to consider. Um, and as Joe said, it's like a, it's like a domino effect, when one person goes down and having one person go down for a long time. Is definitely harder than having someone go down for, for a five or a 10-day period, um. But it became very clear as we dealt with these issues through the week that um. That the real thing that would be helpful for us on a village level is testing, you know, we did have folks who were asymptomatic. Um. And didn't know that they, that they may have been contributing to the spread around, around the space, um. My, my recommendation at this stage is that the, we focus this policy. Around testing, um, and that we call it an interim policy. Um, because who knows what things are going to look like in three weeks, um, right now, testing is a valuable tool. Um, right now, um. We, right now, there is, there is certain guidance for how long you isolate, um, and that is shifting as well. Where, where it would be useful, and where I'm finding trouble right now. Is being, I want to make sure that we're consistent in the response that we're giving staff, right now there is no policy. And so I don't want us to be in an ad hoc or potentially subjective situation saying, you're, you know. You're showing symptoms, you need to go home, you can come back based on this, you can't come back based on that. I would like to have clarity. Um. In addition to the question of, of a weekly testing for, for everyone, vaccinated, unvaccinated, um, I'd like us to. Um. Establish a protocol for when, when a person is asked. To, to test and potentially leave the workplace and what guidance we give for them coming back, in addition to. The CBC guidance, the CBC guidance is currently, if you're, you know, five, five days isolation, if you're positive, and if you're 24 hours fever-free without. Um, a fever-controlling medication, you can come back, I would like to see a negative test. Proof of a negative test before someone comes back, um, that, that's obviously beyond what the CBC is, is requiring. Um, so, m- my, my, I did get some feedback right before the meeting from the village attorney. Which, which I will share with you as we go through. My first recommendation is this, that this become um, an interim policy and procedure. Um, and that we um, have. A review date in it, that it be. a review date in it, that it be interim for X period, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, and we revisit at that time to see what we need to modify in this interim policy based on cha- the changing landscape. Changes that the attorney requested. In the first paragraph under purpose, I have including the village strongly encourages all employees to be fully vaccinated, including all available boosters to protect their own health. So we are encouraging, rather than mandating, third paragraph, all village employees must follow current CDC guidance in that paragraph, John's recommendation was one, two, three, four lines down, they leave the workplace, they should leave the workplace after notifying a supervisor if symptoms develop, small detail. But a good one. He recommended that we pull out the, I, we had suggested a requiring vaccination of new employees, his recommendation was that be, that be pulled out and moved into employee handbook or another hiring policy statement. Which is fine with me, do others have feedback on that?
Makes sense.
Yeah, makes sense.
Sorry, go ahead, I was just, because this came in literally at like six fifty eight, I was just, I'm reviewing, I'm looking at it very quickly to make sure I'm telling you everything I need to tell you. His recommendation was that the village shirt clerk should not keep, yes, not keep copies of actual vaccination cards. Only a record of who is vaccinated, I would agree with that. Uh, when the employee shows the clerk a card, the clerk, clerk checks off a box rather than having them, the vaccination card. And his other recommendation was that there be a test date submission, yeah.
I think we should also include, because there are now apps like the Celsius or Pass and, and such where
Idea.
Stored, and I just assume moving forward, there is gonna be, for testing as well. You know, the, the Phillips Town Rec uses an app that tracks all of your testing and your results, so we should probably put in some language regarding that as well.
I agree.
It's the proof of vaccination.
Say that again?
Just require proof of vaccination, so this way, whether it's the card, whether it's the app, as long as they're showing proof of vaccination, that's all. We don't have to get tied up in whether it's the app or the card or.
No, no, I'm, I'm more suggesting that there are many ways which that information is housed. So, sharing it electronically is even easier than just, you know, walking in with the card.
So, so it's the direction in which this is going, because we're looking, we're looking holistically at everyone on the staff, and we're, it is emphasizing testing. And I will say, Joe, Joe Curdo also made another good point, that right now we have the test site available to us at the rec center, and we, in theory, have a supply of additional rapid tests coming here to Village Hall. Setting a date where we review, that, that is an element that could change too, right now, we're lucky that we have a site available to us. It may not be, and we may not be able to meet the requirements. If we, if we establish an in stone policy, I think that's a good point.
So I've seen a couple of municipalities that are using what they're calling interim guidelines, that with an expiration date.
Yep.
And they're revisiting it prior to the expiration date. Probably some from a perception view that this isn't something permanent, but it's a short term solution to a problem, or not a solution. Helping to get towards a solution. And they were using like January twenty ninth, one used February first, kinda tying it in with the governor's new.
That's a good, that's a good point.
Be something two point O, she called it. Yeah, would make a good idea to use a date, and it can always get revisited, revisit, or it could get dropped completely if the world completely changes.
Right, right.
It makes it more bearable, I think, and easier to follow and understand.
I agree, and it allows, it allows flexibility. My recommendation, given that the village attorney's comments came in so late before the meeting, I would love to pass this tonight. So that I, we have ground to stand on with how we're communicating with employees in terms of when you're coming back, when you need to leave the office or, or the building. But I wanna make sure that we have the language right, and so my recommendation is that I incorporate his comments so that you see the clean, the full clean document that we're voting on and put it before you again next Wednesday. And be consistent in our communication with staff until then. Follow, you know, moving toward, moving toward this. If you're sick, don't come to work, if you're sick at the office. Take a test, if you're positive, you leave, this sort of thing. Does that seem reasonable to everyone, so we get it right?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So I guess I'll make a motion to table the proposal.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And then maybe in your department meeting, just walk through the logistics.
Tomorrow morning, we'll do that.
How this will actually work. Cause there might be a little logistical challenge to it, but it's a small place, so maybe not.
I will say in the first, in the first iteration, it was received with mostly relief by department heads who are you know, experiencing a workplace that could, they, they too would like to have an increased safety in the workplace, so. But we have, and we responded, the modifications came in response to feedback, strong and, and smart feedback that we got from department heads, so. I feel like it's, we're, we're going in the right direction with it to focus it around testing as we are. Jeff, could you please, the last item on the agenda before we move to public comment is correspondence that we received. Late, can you talk us through the request and tell us a little bit about the process of taxes being billed, et cetera?
As everybody knows, June first, village taxes go out, they've always gone out on June first. We put ads, legal notices, ads in the paper that this is happening. In Jan, beginning of January, we send out notices to those who have not paid taxes. This is a reminder that at the end of the month, they were gonna be sent over to the county, and the county would be knocking on people's doors to collect. There are, there's a higher number this year than in the past, typically, there's usually a bit fifteen, maybe sixteen outstanding tax payments that have not been made, this year, it's, I think it was thirty three was the number. But we did receive a letter from someone saying that, they claimed they never received their tax bill. And because they never received it, they feel they don't have to pay the late penalty. Other people have, they've gotten these letters, they call, they apologize, they pay the late penalty, they pay their taxes. This is just the one piece of correspondence we got. The request to waive the late penalty, claiming that she never received the bill.
Where, where is this sent to the address itself, is it sent to a P O box or in care?
Have to look to, for, in this particular case, I believe it goes to the house, I would have to look to see what's on the records. And again, this is not, this request is not coming from a new person in the village. They've gotten their taxes before with no issue.
Um, and just, just so to clarify, so I understand, so the bill goes out on June first, and so effectively they have six months to pay the tax.
Correct, the bill goes out on June first, if they are not paid by the end of June, there's a five percent penalty added, and then there's an additional one percent added each month after that, that they don't pay, so, so the penalty amount does accumulate and build over time, and then it gets to this point where now I think it's, it's ten or eleven percent. They don't, again, if they don't get paid, it gets sent over to the county, the county reimburses us, and then the county collects.
Does the county impose a fee as well?
I'm not sure, I'm sure there is, but I think Michelle's on the call, she might be able to answer that better than I, I'm not sure if the county imposes an additional fee.
Oh, I didn't realize Michelle was here, would have referred to her earlier, or deferred to her earlier.
She joined afterwards, so, and I don't know.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, I was just listening in. So, the county doesn't charge the village a fee, it's just, I, I believe there's an agreement for it. But the county does charge more to the residents after when they try to recoup the fees, but they don't charge us for the service.
Thank you.
So the bill goes out June first, their notices are prior to June first in the newspapers and on the website, I assume.
Correct, yep.
And then after June thirtieth, do they get a late notice, or is it just the late notice is incurred on the bill because it hasn't been paid?
Correct, we don't send out late notices until the beginning of January, we send out a reminder notice.
Got it.
I'm sorry, and that's when this person realized they hadn't paid their taxes?
Correct.
When they got that?
Correct.
Are there any extenuating circumstances, I'm like, I mean, I could tell you, I didn't get my uh, optimum bill for two months. I tried to fill a prescription today and my health, my, you know, that whatever, the card was invalid, tried to call Aetna and get a new card, they, oh, we mailed it in November, never got that. So, you know, between maybe the mail, but also, I mean, is this person like you said, they usually pay on time, so is something going on, maybe?
Don't know, that, they did not offer that up as any explanation. They just, the letter you have, that's in the packet as well.
How much are we talking?
Four hundred fifty three dollars and fifty eight cents.
I, I am a- absent, absent extenuating cir- circumstances, I am disinclined. Because it is a, an, an annual bill, it's an annual bill that's been received for a number of years, there is public notice. Thoughts from others?
Well, I was hoping for some circumstances.
Yeah, I mean, unless they can. I mean, unless they can.
No, I don't either.
Circumstances, other than I didn't get the mail. I mean, it seems like the burden, they've gotta give us a little bit more of a explanation, I think, if we're gonna waive it.
Did they?
Set a precedent.
Yeah, exactly.
It's good a late fee if you're not gonna enforce it.
Did, um, well, I guess the letter is just as it stands, right, there was no other, like the person sent the tax. Oh, oops, here's my, here's the tax bill minus the, the late fee, they just, they, that was their only correspondence, is that?
They, they've paid their bill with, with the late fee.
Oh, they have.
Oh, they did pay.
A refund of that.
They paid the same time that they paid the bill, they gave this letter asking us to waive the penalty.
So she's asked, be reimbursed for the late fee?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's, that's an important piece of the
I don't mean to cut anybody off, but that's my recommendation, anytime anybody asks me to waive a penalty, I let them know that if their taxes are not paid in full with the penalty by January thirty first, I can't accept the payment. So, in terms of her keeping her good tax standing, she paid it and then wrote the letter on my advice, and I tell that to everybody because I don't want them something to get caught up with the decision later on, and then it goes to the county, so they usually pay it and then ask after the fact.
Okay.
Makes sense.
This person also owns another property in the village that those taxes were paid on time.
Okay. So I am disinclined, others?
I, I do agree.
I'd agree with you.
Yeah, I, I, I agree as well.
Okay, Jeff, do we need a, a motion?
You should make a motion and vote on it, yeah.
So I would make a motion to decline the request to reimburse the late fee on this, in this particular instance.
I'll second.
On favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Thanks. All right, well, we've been talking a lot tonight, does the public have anything to say? They're all dropping like flies. Well, hearing none, seeing none. Um, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good work tonight, everyone, I'll send round the, I'll send round the revisions.
Okay, thank you, everybody, stay safe, healthy.
You too.
Stay warm. Kathleen, just as an aside, sixty some odd mile an hour winds, maybe we should find out about if the Christmas decorations, the wreaths can come down, there's already a bow on James.
Good point, yeah.
Lawn.
Yeah, all right, good point.
I don't know if we need the
I think we need the county to do that. We have adjourned, we have adjourned and we're having this conversation, I'll follow up with you in the morning. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Good, there guys.